Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Today is Monday, August the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. It is precisely one oh five P M. And this is a special meeting for the Human Rights Commission of the City of Palm Springs, California. Welcome everyone. What I'd like to do now, um, calling the meeting to order, we're gonna do roll call, please. Commissioner Vignolo.
Present.
Commissioner Cleary. Not here. Commissioner Flood, here. Commissioner Rameron. Uh, not here. Commissioner Rinky.
Here.
Commissioner Horn. Commissioner Greer.
Here.
Vice Chair Shepard.
At present.
Chair Loyola, here, present. Unit Representative Hanner. Uh, we have four on Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Jay.
Uh, our next item of the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda? We have a motion by Commissioner Greer, second.
I second.
Commissioner Rinky seconds that, so the agenda has been accepted. Thank you very much. We're not gonna go over the mission statement and the goals for this meeting, um, for today. Um, Jay, do we have any public comments? Uh, we have one public comment.
Do we vote on the agenda?
Oh, yeah.
Now.
I know we had a.
We had a.
Motion.
Motion and a second.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have a vote on accepting the agenda? You can raise your hand, say a.
Say a.
Motion passes five zero. So, item number five, public comments. You said one by Paul.
What's that?
It would be me.
Hi, Paul.
Let's come. So this is a special meeting. I thought it was a regular meeting. Okay, well, it can still fit in here. So I've got two topics I wanted to briefly bring up. Um, I believe the, um, the request came out of this commission years ago and, um, the city council member Lisa Middleton brought it up at a one P S meeting, and that was looking for a way to, um, honor Mr. Lawrence Crossley. And at the time, my husband and I were working a lot with that neighborhood and became aware that there's some lots that the city owns that are really irregular. They really can't be used for much of anything, and they're at the south end of the neighborhood. And I think they'd be ideal for a memorial art park to Mr. Crossley. We submitted that a long time ago, and nothing ever happened. We just figured probably some other idea was adopted. Uh, but we never heard anything more, so we thought, well, we've got this, let's throw it in. So I uh, forwarded it to Jay. He provided it to the Public Arts Commission. Um, I also sent it to the Parks and Rec Director. And so I thought I'd come here and just mention it and, uh, Jay, if you get a chance, if you can share that at some point with that PDF with the commission to take a look at it, um, because I'd really like to see Mr. Crossley get some recognition more than just a, a name on a street. Um, because he's really important. Uh, but I will address one kind of bad optic, and that is that a couple of gay white guys are the ones that are promoting this. So what we're hoping is that the commissions and some local artists will, uh, take on such a project. Some have already expressed a lot of interest in it. The neighborhood itself has expressed interest in being involved in it. Uh, so, uh, I just wanted to share that that's out there. Jay will share that with you, and maybe that discussion go forward because we figured, uh, we've tried to get it one more shot. And secondly, did I already use that three minutes, Jay? Probably not. There's also a, um, a Palm Springs Smoke Free Ordinance that's been in the works for quite some time. My husband and I have been pushing it for years. It came before this commission through the Sustainability Commission a while back. Um, and there's been some rewrites, and Commissioner Baker, which several of you know Carl, um, did a rep, uh, an update and a rewrite to it, but he has since moved on to the Planning Commission because he termed out of sustainability. So, uh, I've spoken with, um, L P on sustainability, and she's looking for a new commissioner on that commission to, uh, bring that forward. So we're gonna be asking your commission to come and take a look at it again and see if we can bring, uh, some of that forward. And that was pretty much it. Time's kinda heads up. Time.
Paul, thanks. Could you please state your last name for the record?
Yes, certainly. Paul Henrichsen, that's spelled H I N R I C H S E N. And if you need to reach me, Jay certainly knows how, as well as others here can try to reach me.
Oh, thank you so much for your public testimony.
Absolutely. Thank you for listening.
Have a good ones. Jay, we have our, um, vice chair, um, and our Commissioner Rameron at his attendance, so we're gonna have them to.
Did you have public comments?
No, I'm just. Yeah. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so that was public comments. Um, from my comments, I'll keep them very brief. I know that this is a very important meeting. Um, we tried very, very hard to make this sort of a retreat that we as a commission have been talking about at least for the last one month, and unfortunately, because this commission is achieving form with a number of commissioners, it had to become a public facing meeting. And this is the reason why we're holding the meeting here in City Hall and not at the beautiful home of our vice chair, who very kindly offered to host us today. And so, uh, we have a few items that we'd like to discuss, but I think that the impetus for, um, today would be to revisit um, the role of our committees um, to make sure that everyone feels comfortable with, um, understanding how we serve at the pleasure and at the direction of our city council. And, uh, obviously give, uh, everyone an opportunity to ask any questions so that we can prepare and plan for the months ahead and to the end of the year, and then what's coming up in twenty twenty-four, some of the key important, um, events, uh, community events and our community engagement. Um, so that's the impetus of, of this meeting, and, and of course, you're all welcome to to interact, um, with thoughts and questions. We'll, we'll try to answer as many as possible in the time that we have today. Um, so what I'd like to do now is basically move on to the items for discussion and action, and we have one item, which is item seven A, which is the approval of our Human Rights Commission, and it's non-monetary but cosponsoring chip of the Boot to Bullying Tenth Anniversary Community Festival and Celebrity Kickball Game on September thirtieth, twenty twenty, so, so twenty twenty-three. Um, Commissioner Vignolo, before we go on to vote, can you give us a quick um, overview, a recap of, uh, of the event? We're not calling it a symposium, is that correct?
Not a symposium at all.
Correct. And as, as a reminder, we had the C E O of Boot to Bullying, Dimitri Harkitis, come and present for this commission at our last meeting, and he gave us a very thorough introduction to the concept of the event. And Mr. Harkitis has been working very, very closely with Commissioner Vignolo on the planning and sort of like the strategic, um, um, organization of the event. Um, so Commissioner Vignolo.
Well, I can tell you, it is Saturday, September thirtieth. It's more of a festival than a symposium. Uh, Dimitri's the lead on it, and he's organizing to have uh, various community organizations have a presence there at the Leisure Center in Pavilion. Um, which I think everybody knows where that is, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it'll run from about eight thirty, nine o'clock till about two P M. There'll be a food truck, there'll be a milk cone truck, I think. There'll be activities for the kids and youth that attend. And they would like us to still be co-sponsor, and what that entails, I leave it up to this commission to decide how it wants to be involved, whether we wanna have a table and have commissioners there that can speak to people, or if you wanna engage with the youth. And that is up to this group to decide how they wanna be present, or if you just wanna slap our name on the marketing materials and leave it at that, then that's up to the commission to decide. I have no preconceived notions on how this would go.
Right.
So.
But it could also be a combination of things, right? For example, we could individually decide that we wanna participate in some of the activities. Um, for example, if I recall correctly, if I recall correctly, there was an opportunity to kick the ball with the children.
A kickball game.
Like, yeah.
Could be.
Right.
I mean, I don't know. The program's still under development, so I, you know, I don't know exactly how it will go, but, uh, we had a meeting with the Parks and Recreation Department last week just to finalize that we in fact can, or Dimitri's group, Boot to Bullying, can use the leisure center in the pavilion. Um, and then there's that space in between the two buildings that will be available. Um, and then in front, there's a roundabout. Um, right in front, where I guess parking typically occurs, but that will be blocked off so that food trucks and other trucks can be placed there. Um, it's gonna use the baseball field for the kickball.
The high school one, correct?
Hmm.
The high school baseball field?
I think so, yeah. But some, a couple of them are being reseeded, so they're not available. Um, he talked about having a camel ride for kids, so it's more to be more fun for the kids, but we're trying to also make it somewhat educational. That's really all I can tell you. That's all I know.
Do you know if there are any, like, speakers planned, or?
Do not know.
No.
None, none to my knowledge.
Good.
Yes.
Didn't we talk about this at our last meeting, kind of?
Briefly, yeah.
And I, I feel like I remembered Jay or somebody telling us that we're not able to put our name on this. I mean, I support the project. I think it's a great thing that you're doing, but didn't we already go through this, and we've been told basically now we can't be a co-sponsor?
It's, you're technically the city, so if the city is sponsoring, then, um, that sponsorship is already there. Uh, however, uh, to help out and be a part of the, uh, process, Human Rights Commission can do that, to participate in that sense. It really comes down to the, uh, Human Rights Commission logo versus the use of the city logo. That's where the city prefers to have the city logo uh, on all the city activities that are.
It's fine. So we can use the City of Palm Springs logo, but this, there isn't, to my knowledge, not a single City of Palm Springs staff person engaged with this event, so that's what they're looking for us.
Which you're asking for now, which is a little different than last time. You were asking for sponsorship logo. We said mounted that, but now you're saying we need participation. You want us to come and help out and that kind of thing.
If we want, if we wanna have a table.
I just wanna be clear.
So, yeah.
That's all good.
Yeah, we could have a table. We could have our, I think, our table skirt around the table.
Say, we, are you referring to the whole commission? Are you referring to people who volunteer? I just wanna kind of specify what the obligation expectation is for the, the Human Rights Commission, using logo or co-sponsoring.
Well, I think it's the Human Rights Commission commissioners, either all of us or some of us. But it isn't gonna just be me. Okay, let's be clear. So that's, I mean, what we need to decide. What, what do you wanna do on September thirtieth?
I think that's an extension to the city as a commission. Um, we certainly will support this, this event. Uh, it's very important that the city has already agreed to participate and support the event that we as a commission should look to support it as well. And then it's up to us individually how you want to participate. I mean, in person, we've attended several events with, like David mentioned, we have a table and we have literature about human rights, and people can come in and um, give us information or post a complaint about human rights violations and things of that nature. Um, but certainly, once the program becomes available, we can take a look at the program and see what kinds of activities each and every one of us would be interested in actually joining and participating individually. Um, but we can all decide that at least be there and, uh, and, and, and join the festivities, right, as, as a commission.
I mean, I think he's looking for help, basically. I mean, it's a big event, and they don't have the manpower to be everywhere and do everything. So they're trying to engage as many volunteers to work with kids or, you know, engage with the kids or direct them or help with setup, help with cleanup. I mean, there are a lot of moving parts.
Well, you know, in working with kids, don't you have to be fingerprinted? Um, you know, if you're going to be tutoring, if you're gonna be working in schools, if you're working with kids, I think there's some requirements, I believe.
I don't think so.
So this, I think that it's a little bit different here, since it's a public event. It's more, it seems to me it's more like a, a fair type situation.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a public thing, so we're not one-on-one working with students, where if it was something that was one-on-one, I could see where there needs to be watch and taken, but here it's very out in the open, very public, um, and there's a little bit more, um, I guess there's a background here behind us and behind the people that we're working with, so it's not as necessary in the strapping, like, the meeting that we're taking.
Okay.
And Boot to Bullying's taking care of the liability insurance and all of the requirements that Parks Recreation has, which is a city agency. It's not.
Yeah.
Parks Recreation is the City of Palm Springs. So they sign off on everything. We just have to be willing to be present.
So what would be the motion here?
So the motion would be to approve our non-monetary but consponsoring of the event as a commission.
Well, that was, well, I heard you say all. I wasn't even close to what you said. I don't get to do motions when I do parades and stuff. It's just like the parades. We go to the Veterans Day Parade, we go to the gay parade, we go to the the Black History Month Parade. I think this is the same thing. It's just a volunteer. Help out does. Am I making it too simple?
No, I mean, that's, I just need to note, I need to go back to Dimitri and say, yes, the Human Rights Commission would like to be part of this event. And if I understand, we are willing to at least have a table, and we will get the table skirt, and at least some of us might show up during that day and sit at that table and engage with parents and youth and kids if they stop by. Or will we just have a table with a band, you know, our banner and enough new person behind it, but.
Well, we know you'll be there, Dave.
I may be running around doing anything, so we need a little bit more than just me and.
Of course.
I think Oliver said he'd help out. I think Lily said you might be able to be there. And I think there was one other person.
Not me.
Nope.
I, 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 I have to say, as a new member of the organization, um, and hearing about this for the first time last week and now hearing more from you, David, I am totally and absolutely confused with what this project is, what it's for, what it's doing. And I think, you know, from a personal point of view, I'd like to just recruit myself from the, from the vote uh, at this point, because I, quite frankly, I don't understand what this is doing. I think it's great that the city is supporting something, and hopefully it will go off doing whatever the purpose is, but but I, I, I'm not clear on what the purpose is, what we're doing, how, what the focus, who evolved, and so I, I, I don't feel comfortable myself with just at this point voting. I know you guys have all had more background in this than I, so I think I'll stand back and enjoy whatever you.
Commissioner Rinky.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, I, I just have another comment, too. You know, um, I know I keep, um, emailing some of the executive committee about what the strategic plan is, what are our strategies, what are, what are the human rights we're gonna focus on for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year. And, um, and I, so, you know, um, Commissioner Hugo, Chair, Chair Loyola has pointed out, it has included in the packet, what the city council's strategies are. And so we should be kind of, um, um, acting in, in consonant or under the, um, orchestration of the city council. So that's why I'm thinking, so, you know, what are the, the big level projects? We have, like, limited scope of resources. So that, that would be one thing that, um, that I would bring up in a broader sense.
Any additional comments?
No, I agree, I agree with Commissioner Rinky. I think part of the, the purpose of engaging in this particular event is to help increase the visibility of the Human Rights Commission. That's the, really the sole purpose. People don't even know what the Human Rights Commission is, who they are, what they do. And so the more we get out in the community, at community events, I think it helps our us achieve what we, I hope we will come out of this meeting with our strategic priorities for the next year. But this is coming up fast and furious, and it's only in Sep- September, so that's why I'm
Sure.
Kind of just pushing this as here's an opportunity for us at least to get our name out there in our faces, particularly for the new commissioners. It gives you an opportunity to get out in the community and say, hi, you know, I'm a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission. What are your concerns? What can we do to help you? Hear from the community instead of just sitting around a table like this, and we hardly hear from anybody.
We have some ideas.
Okay.
Lots of ideas.
I think it's also just, last year, we did a symposium at the, uh, at
Convention.
The convention center where we, where we had speakers who talked out about bullying, and it was an educational format. But to do it again this year seems a little redundant, so that's where the actual event is happening. That's why we've decided to do, do a different medium. Um, while it is absolutely a way to get our name out there, which is why it's important that we kind of sponsor it and put our name, like, this isn't just the City of Palm Springs, it's even more so this commission. Um, it's also the fact that we're focusing on this issue of bullying and, and, and that sort of uh, topic. And this is, this, uh, event is how we're speaking out and, um, educating about that.
And one of the criticisms we got last year was we didn't have a lot of kids show up. It was hard to get them to the venue on a Saturday morning. So the Boot to Bullying, who are the subject matter experts, if you will, in the issue of bullying, said, I think we need to change the focus to make it a little bit more fun, more engaging, more attractive to young people, to get them out of their houses and come to a public event on a Saturday morning. So that's why it shifted to a more carnival-like fun event, but we still wanna have a presence and be able to share information about our commission and our efforts to combat bullying in all of its forms, whether it happens in a school, or it happens to a senior, or it happens out on the street as a hate crime, so things like that.
I think, uh, we should drop the part of our, uh, co-sponsorship and just say, prove participation.
That's fine.
And, and, and the individuals who was available will show up and assist. I mean, I was there last year, and I agree with what you said. It was like the, the, the people who know Boot to Bullying, bullying, were talking to each other. And there's not many children or people who are sort of, uh, victims of that there.
Right. We don't have to sponsor it. You don't have to officially be on it. The City of Palm Springs will have its logo on it.
Yeah, the city's.
But what I wanna be clear, Commissioner Flood, is that I don't wanna be the only one.
I understand.
Okay, I just will not do it.
I know, I mean.
So I know Lily and Oliver stepped up and said they will be, but I really think the commission needs to step up and be present, if it's for an hour, a half an hour, or just a drop by. I mean, if you can, you gotta show up.
Do you have a sense of when a final agenda become available?
Well, I mean, that's up to Dimitri and his group. I mean, they're gonna be meeting weekly, but probably not till uh, the first of September, and here it is the fifteenth, so it's kind of hard to be doing a lot of planning, but I pushed him on it, and he said, well, as soon as we can get people engaged, they'd plan on doing it. As soon as they have something, I'll pass it out, but, or I'll send it through Jay to share with everybody.
So what is our action here then?
I mean, we don't need to vote or anything like that. I'm just hopefully someone else will be there.
Okay.
Okay.
So can we agree then that, uh, we'll wait to have a final agenda circulated for that event? On the date is already set, right? It's September thirtieth.
The date's confirmed, is that?
It's confirmed. And then once we have the ability to see the agenda, we can individually decide, you know, whether you wanna participate and and see what opportunities are there.
Okay.
In support of the city.
David, I feel like you feel like you're not getting the support that you're looking for. I feel your pain. I'll tell you where, um, coming from. I have no idea if my other counsel, our commissioners go the same. My thing is, we have a number of public events like that through the year, that I think I mentioned before, parades and different stuff that we do show up, and we carry our banner, and you know, Hugo and I did most of that ourselves, as you. It doesn't change anybody's human rights. It does show the people that are at that particular event that the Human Rights Commission exists. So your point about more visibility for the commission to the public is very important. The only reason I'm not waving my hand of volunteering is because I'm gonna pick a, a, you know, a probably two or three of those events, and I'll go to all of them.
Sure.
If I was gonna go to all of them, I'd say I'll be there, and I may be there. I'm not saying I'm not. Uh, but I'm not ready to commit to that till I see what some of the other things that are, are going on.
That's it.
Appreciate that, what you're doing. I appreciate Lily signing up and Oliver signing up. Anybody else that wants to go, I think is terrific. Um, and I'm sorry you've had a struggle with it, because I like to see us a little bit more jump in and be cooperative with our fellow commissioners. But I think that's one reason we elected to have a retreat today and figure out who we are and what the hell we're trying to do. So we may be putting the cart before the horse on first our election, and second, boot of bullying and, you know, many other things. I think the critical thing for me today is the retreat. I'm sad that we've only got a couple hours. We've already spent a half hour on this, on boot of bullying, so I think we need to really dig in and figure out, you know, who we are as a commission, what we wanna be, do we wanna let people sit around on Zoom and tables and look at each other, or do we wanna dig into something? Yeah, exactly. I feel like because of the pandemic and other things that are not, uh, not at anybody's spot, a leadership change and everything else, we've kind of stalled.
Yeah.
And I think there's probably universal frustration with that.
I totally get it.
Point, so.
Okay, so if we can move on to the, and the next item on the agenda, which is items for the retreat and the topics for the retreat, um, at some point, we may have to pause because when our city clerk comes in, there'll be a swearing in, so be reminded of that.
Sometime, great.
Okay. So we're gonna start by looking and revisiting the document. That's a memo from City Council's staff report dated maybe eleven twenty twenty-three. And that was, um, from the city manager, Scott Stiles, um, and it was written and compiled by Toots, a guy around as a city manager. And the most important part of this document is item one N, which is page five. And, and this particular snapshot, we're looking at the strategic plan that the city council has put forward for the, for this year, right? And so everything that every commission and board does in support of the city council must strategically support the plan. We may come up with lots of ideas, lots of to get, you know, lots of recommendations, things that we'd like to see implemented. However, if it doesn't strategically fit into this plan and supports the, the council's, um, direction, it probably is not a non-starter. And so when we're coming back and reporting from things that we hear in the community, and we go to the events, and we go to the parades, or someone brings something to our attention, or we would like to make a Or someone brings something to our attention, or we would like to make a recommendation, we have to think about where does that fit? Into this strategic map. How does it support the sort of the goals, if you will? A- as you can see, it's divided into two main sections, which is. Uh, the goal for quality of life, how can we do things to improve the quality of life for residents and people who live in Palm Springs? And a second, very important, lovely goal is all this community infrastructure category. So there's a lot of things here that definitely do not pertain to us as the Human Rights Commission, but some things it certainly do. And here's what some great opportunities open up, Carolina, because, look. One, A, quality of life, improve homelessness. And I know from conversations that we've had and exchanges. That you have a very particular interest in this topic. Can you tell us a little bit more about?
Yeah, in fact, I pursued it um by um. Understanding the various stakeholders. One of the things that I really learned about this um community. Is that there's so much redundancy between what the nonprofits do and what the city agencies do. And then what the um uh other profit organizations do, especially around homelessness. And this is just kind of a swirling um tornado of different ideas and different venues. But here in the city, so I I talked to Chief Commissioner Andy Mills. About what about basically, what does he think that the Human Rights Commission should be doing on the rest? And he was very specific, yeah, he was very specific, you know, about dealing with homelessness and the lack of emergency beds that are available. Emergency shelter beds. There are twenty that are only available in the summers, I understand, through the help of Jay. Jay's really been helpful in educating me and his staff, Roman Ruiz. And um and so this is one of the major pieces of information I can bring back here is that. He was very vocal that the H, the um HRC could actually um educate and let the community know. Uh, within the city, within the nonprofits, of the importance of being developing these emergency shelters. Um, I met with Frank Guarino, who is his chief guy who does, who addresses homelessness. And and they were telling me stories and they pick up people on the streets. They can arrest a few of them for maybe stealing grocery carts. Or for, you know, smoking meth right there in public is a public nuisance. Uh, they go to jail for a number of hours and then they're out again. There's no place to go or to put them. And um and then you also, then you have the community, um the tent communities, which is different, they're more organized. And that group of people um need um need healthcare and there's some, there's work going on to address that. But Chief Andy Mills and and Frank Guarino have been very clear. So the other thing that's happening is that um uh Roman Ruiz has been working with is the rise. It's it's um initiative, which has just been in a couple of um publications here in Palm Springs. It is um resilience, I think integrity to end homelessness. And this is a mobile clinic that has been financed by the Desert Health Regional Desert Healthcare District. Um, and it goes to two of the washes where these um communities are. And they even have doctors there. And so these people come out of the wash and they come and they visit and they get doctors' visits. They can get chronic wound care. And um there's even um a group, um DAP Health also um provides clean needles to these people who are um addicted. And um in harm reduction is what they describe it, in Narcan. And anyhow, so um so there's lots going on, but so we have Chief Mill and and Andy Mills says he would come here. And he would talk about it if we wanted him to. He also gave the opportunity for the commissioners to go out and meet some of the people in the wash. Yeah, we could go out there and talk to these people and get a better understanding what homelessness is about. Because I think there's different population segments and then all.
My my mom works at a grocery store over by the wash that runs right past the water park. So a lot of them come into her grocery store and she knows a lot of them. She has names for them. Um, since I li- I live right by one of the washes in Palm Springs. One of the people who lives there, I don't know his name, I just know of him. And you can see all the tents when you drive over the bridge, the Ginatri Bridge, so you can see all the tents in the wash. Uh, one of the members there found a way to steal a um a solar panel. And my mom saw, he, she works nights, so she kind of sees them walking around and doing their thing at night since it's cooler. And he was riding his bike with a solar panel, like attached, like kind of wrapped to his back so that way it wouldn't light fall. Uh, and I haven't seen it firsthand, but he does have it rigged up. Um, so he's found a way to give himself power in his like tent. Um, so however that benefits and he's found a way to do it and there are like communities and there's a lot of people, especially right here.
So the police know them, they actually know who they are.
Yeah.
And they can go ahead and introduce us to these people. And then also Roman Ruiz, let me just finish this one point, um who works for Jay. Um, said that we could go seven to nine every Wednesday morning is when that uh mobile clinic comes to these washes. And we can go enjoy and watch and see what's going on to get a firsthand res um understanding. Uh, because we have different populations. We have people on the streets who are at risk. That the police deal with and we have the the tent communities, they rig up even on. Yeah, when they were the wash at Walmart, they rigged up solar panels. They got the electricity from Walmart that's cleaned up. And then we also have, um, like I said, the uh, the um, uh, the trailer, the mobile clinic. Anyhow, um.
So what what exactly do you see Commissioner Rinkie? As the Human Rights Commission doing in support of the?
First of all, understanding the scope of the problem and as part Andy Mills said, letting the rest of the community, including inter-agencies, understand. The 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 need that we have for emergency shelter.
How do you envision the Human Rights Commission doing what you just said with no budget?
Man, it's a good start to at least go and speak to these people, like you were saying, if it's open for us to go and and talk to these people. It, how are we going to help or bring awareness to a problem? We have no idea how to how to navigate it.
What we do, there are lots of ideas out there, but how do we get in the midst of it and help coordinate, better educate? Um, I mean, Rise has like twenty different organizations helping, including Martha's Village. So and I'm asking them, what kind of role is the Human Rights Committee have?
Um, I I feel uneasy about this. Only because one of the things that you did speak about redundancy, which is really important. Um, there is a real level of one, one, the chief doesn't control the commission, the chief doesn't tell us what to do. So we have to really figure out as a commission, again, just what we had here, the what is our participation? Not, we're not doing direct services as a commission. That's one thing we have to get, be very clear. There are very, very specific things that we've been empowered to do and this, we we you know, we have, we could, we need to have these conversations. And the reality is that, yes, there are a lot of inner agencies and even amongst us, I I work with an agency that does work. You know, with making sure that we look at homelessness, but we have to really look at a lot of issues. I mean, you haven't even discussed about mental health awareness in this. So there's a real level of like, one, yeah, we could look at the services and and the chief mills is the city. We have to remember that too. It's not just like an outside, the police department is our, they, we work together. So when we're a commissioner, we are working with the police. When we're looking at the homeless issue and we look at them as like those people, it's really a problem. So like, that's one of the things I've been really, that's a, that's a human rights issue. It's how the homeless community is 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 e- even like talked about in a municipal conversation like this. It's a really, really important issue. So like, and but I appreciate it because you're looking at it from a very, very sort of like, one, I spoke with the chief. And this is what we're looking at, but we have to really look at how the commission can really be, you know, empowered to do what it can do. We're very, we're very, you know, there there's a very limitation of what we can do.
Additionally, too, there's uh the the city has uh, I'm trying to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they allocated a million or two or something to. Making sure that the uh sanitation and the potency are are being kept up. So and also there's an adaptation system that's now over here that now has blown the budget. It's all crazy. I I I happen to know the people that started that and put the emergency funding in, you know, that needs to happen. Are the people, and I think every human rights commissioner, what we should be looking at is, are are the human rights of these people? Being met and are the human rights of the rest of the people that their life is affecting being met efficiently? And how can we help the city to do better at what we're doing?
I mean, I'm really. Yeah.
There's a lot of agencies out there that I have a lot of respect for and they're trying and they've done all sorts of things from every, every, every. Uh, different ideas that's come across about how to deal with homeless, none of which has worked.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think they need, that's just another one. But I know Andy, I've talked with Andy a lot about homelessness too, and uh he has. Um, he has uh expressed his frustration with with the laws of California, being not being able to. To uh deal with these people from a legal point of view because we don't have the appropriate backup. And that's the way the law was, uh, we have a number of those laws in California that. That stop us from really doing what we think should be right.
I I totally agree, but you you totally reinforced that it's like talking about the criminalization of the folks. So this is a very important, that's that's the root of it. And what I'm thinking about as a commissioner is that if we have a, you know, even like this level of empathy that comes from the city versus like looking at them as as a problem. That's what, that's what I'm talking about. We're talking about harm reduction, yes, and we're talking about beds, yes.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of stuff there, but we, as a commission, we totally need to be thinking about as as a, as a, as a different sort of. It's a bigger, it's a bigger issue than just like looking at what is being done because we can't do the services.
Yeah, yeah, what what I, what I was really, I'm sorry that this didn't come through, but it's really kind of a collaborative. A a effort because this rise um um group, I'll send you the website, they, they're partners. Operation Safe House, Tenet Healthcare, Desert Healthcare District, um the Behavioral Health Hope Group, DAP Health, Martha's Village, Jewish Family Services. Palm, this, the police department, Find Food Bank, the food banks come in, the Coitola Valley Rescue Mission. So anyway, this is a collaborative effort, kind of looking at very complex problems. So I, and and so if we're supporting the stra- strategy of homelessness, what is our role? I think that's a.
Yeah, I'd love to know more about the Rice project. I mean, that's what we need. That's that's our education as a Human Rights Commission to do on our, on our, you know.
We also have to keep reminding the the commission advises the city council. We can't do anything without the city council saying move forward. And when we do something, we if we present a paper or we consider a brief, present a briefing to the city council. They make the decision on how to move forward. So we can't, I don't think we can move out on our own. It's good to discuss it and come up with some strategy. To present to the city council that has not come up before, but the city council has been on top of this for, yeah, for years. I've been there for five and a half years. And I know that's one of the top issues.
I think this goes back to Vice Chair's comment. I mean, I'd like to understand. Then what is the purpose of the Human Rights Commission? And what specifically are we going to try to do in the next month? And if it's simply to discuss internally.
Yeah.
Issues or how to improve human rights, then let's be clear about, all we're going to do is talk. But if we're gonna, if if you as commissioners think we're going to actually. Take initiative and do something within the bounds of supporting or the city council, then. We got to figure out what we want to do. Do we want to just talk? Or do we want to take action? And if we're going to take action, what specifically is the actions? This commission wants to do in the next twelve months?
It's, well, I think that, I think we're we're going on, this is basically the the, oh, and I think. Is what you're saying, really the action that we're limited to our our ability to talk and then put together something in terms of a. Suggestion or paper or something that we then deliver to the to the uh council. Now that said, then we we can only focus ourselves, say, on maybe three issues in a year. I mean, you can't really go any farther than that or we're just going to become, and and we're really too diffuse. And what those are the most important issues, I guess, should come from here. Um, you know, housing, I mean, it's huge. And there's a huge argument going on right now in the in the country is housing, right? That's a good thing for a human rights commission to look at. If we looked at all the various arguments in one way or the other and and determined what what we think. Palm Springs should look at, whether or not it's right or whether or not it is a privilege. Um, that that's been the long-term discussion about healthcare for years and nobody's ever managed to resolve that one either. So I won't say.
Maybe you should just take one.
Yeah.
Maybe you should just take one thing.
They're not doing healthcare.
Let's talk, if you wanted your homelessness, great, let's just talk about homelessness. What do you see this commission doing?
What does the commission do?
I don't know.
Advocate and educate. That's as much as I could come up with when I'm looking through.
And what does that mean, advocate and educate?
It's like we're going to boot to bullying and showing up. It's like showing up, but I think. Also, but also I think there's the opportunity to sort of um help coordinate and understand. Understand what our role is as a human rights commission to support um the housing initiatives that are going on amongst the um. Then collaboration with other groups. That's that's how I'm thinking about it, but.
How would you do that?
Well, we have the rise initiative here. I mean, and so I.
I know that the rising, what exactly do you see the commission doing with the rise initiative?
Understanding, um, do they need more support? Do they, does that need to be?
Does that bring them in here and have them do a presentation and ask them, what do you want from the commission, knowing?
Well, we could, I mean, that that could be one possibility. Yes, if, no, absolutely.
I mean, I'd like like an action.
Well, I think we're still exploring. Okay, I mean, I, before you can get to actions, you have to really understand what your strategy is and then what your goals are and then how you can do something measurable.
Okay, let's start with.
Homelessness is a huge issue. It's been a huge issue here for a long time. There've been a number and huge number of of nonprofits, city cops, everything all, you know, focused on it. Um, this initiative comes out of rap and and doesn't help traditional, which is great. They try to always put things together and they do a good job of it. Um. Wh- what can we, what, what, what or what help would we be and how would we focus our component of it? Um, what would we be looking at? Would we, would we be saying that it's our job to look at what the rights are of these people? And therefore we should be doing something or we should be looking at the rights of somebody else or, you know, I mean, we're a human rights commission. We're not just a uh.
Yeah, I think we should invest in a whiteboard in here.
Yeah, you always need to, I can't have a resume without having writing.
You know, one of the things that we are empowered to do is actually build that level of involvement, engagement of the community. I mean, I came on because folks asked to get someone of the Filipino community in here. So if we were to get someone uh uh who is unhoused on the commission to serve, that'd be, you know, they have the time. Why don't we have some, why don't we recruit someone to be a representative also of the community? I mean, it's totally a base on that level of like, we're looking at communities and getting them involved on human rights issues in the city level. We should have someone unhoused on the commission.
That's an excellent idea.
I mean, we should be recruiting folks from all different areas to be involved.
How do you think we would recruit somebody from?
We asked, we invite people, just like I've been invited to be to serve on this, this council, uh, this commission. I've, you know, I would never have been on this commission unless someone asked, honestly.
I know, I know.
Cause I didn't, I see, I never saw it until someone asked me to. And that was literally from the leadership.
Yeah.
So that it's a, it's, we have, we are empowered as leaders to go out there and say, hey, we need your help.
So let's.
Let's do, let's, you know, ask folks.
So do it. What's preventing any single commissioner or collectively we decide? That on this date, at this time, we as a commissioner are going to go out and recruit and talk to someone in the homeless community instead of sitting around a table.
I mean, I'm, I'm ready to help you.
Yeah.
Okay. We can push for recruitment though.
I mean.
Yeah.
What happened to the thirty-two million put aside for the for the navigation?
Oh, it's still, it's still in place. It's just that it's the the new, every time.
The answer that I think is that it could be a liaison, uh, some someone in a liaison role or capacity.
It's, it's around.
Engaging with someone that is a liaison, so is.
A liaison, but they could also graduate to levels really serving here because we actually, you know, vote on things. So there there's a real level of engagement, liaisons, yeah, but it becomes more, you know, we're we're active. And I think that's one of the things that's being asked here is like, if we're going to be active and we're going to make real ha- things happen. We have to have folks really represented here and and I'm glad you asked about the navigation center because one, that was a human rights issue. One, for the homeless folks who need that service. It's it's questionable because it's, again, this is on, uh, you know, because we have those kind of conversations about what kind of services we can provide. Because those are uh uh unhoused families who would already be in the system. So it's very, very different from what we're talking about, sort of street, street outreach or even like um sort of what um the police department is having to deal with with nuisances, if you will. But like, there's a whole level of like wanting, you know, one, that navigation center happened because there were two buildings in District One that were being considered. It was a, that's a huge human rights issue because only District One, which is a minority victory district, was considered to house the unhoused. So you have to really think about that on a larger scale of why we couldn't think of downtown as as a location. No, we had to look at the sort of districts that were outside of them.
From what happened with the hotel.
Yeah, well, they're they're also, which is a good example, those are the only places where we have these large places that can happen. And 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 the um the um section eight or the affordable housing is also right adjacent to. You have to really think about those sort of larger issues. It's not just about like, oh, we got to go and help the person who's like, you know, stealing. Solar panels, which which is an issue too, but we ought to want to have focus here on the criminalization of the of the unhoused.
I still want to know where he got that solar panel from. Like, I've been trying to figure this out for.
Yeah, but they face some of the most demoralizing and like their anathema in this, in this, in the city. It's it's really horrific the way they're they're talked about on the city level. It's really, really bad. That is a human rights issue.
Yeah.
It's not just about the services that are already happening. Rise is happening.
There are.
I'm not even. It's not just about the services that are already happening. Rise is happening. I'm not even, you know, worried about the services from this, you know, the city. But if we're gonna really issue, uh, deal with issues, we have to say like, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about a community that's totally underserved in this way, in the most empathetic and loving way. And that's the way, that's the way. Yeah, it, it helps, uh, people understand what homelessness is. It's not just about it, someone who's just, you know, doing math on the, on the. It's, it's totally a lot.
We need to go back to, what are our goals?
Yeah, that's.
If this is a strategic planning meeting, let's go back to, at least agreeing on one or two or three goals for the Human Rights Commission going forward. I think we're getting into some of the weeds.
We should probably review this whole quality of life section and not get stuck on homelessness.
Can we recess?
The document does say we have fifteen goals and objectives that I would like to take a look at. So that we don't duplicate what's already been done. The front page of the city council staff is working on at the bottom paragraph. It says within the four categories, fifteen goals and fifty objectives we're identifying. Okay, so let's take a look at those.
That was the background.
That are much more narrow.
That was the background. Then they whittled it down to just these seven on page two. Based on council direction.
These are the most important.
We're gonna call a recess. We're gonna call a brief recess. Great discussion and obviously very vividly, but I'm getting an, an action item. So I'm getting an action item out of this particular discussion, which is to actively recruit someone for the homeless community who can help us by participating in helping this draft to communicate empathetic messages about the homeless. And participate in events, community events, um, as often as we are able to, um, that have to do with the issue of homelessness. And at least that's one action item that we could, um, that we can sort of like grasp, yes? All right. So moving on with this particular segment of quality of life, yes.
Um, is that a motion?
Um, we're not wait voting yet.
Okay, okay. I, I guess my question is, um, who will be designated to do that?
Um, would you like to take the initiative to lead that? Since you've been obviously very, um, actively uh, researching the topic?
Okay, I, I'll see what I can do. I, I'm going to these homeless encampments with the person with the, uh, the rise group. Okay.
Then you can come and, and give us updates to the commission at large. Right? So we have one B, which is crime reduction. Yeah.
We have nine, just so you know, we have nine members on the commission. If we recruit somebody, one of us has to resign. Or, or we have to have the city, maybe we have this, we approached the city council and asked them to amend the ordinance to increase the number from nine to eleven.
Cause not that person was being advisor to the. Make sure, like, probably make a little less.
I will resign if we could, we get someone to commit. That'd be amazing. That'd be like a, a paradigm shift.
Crime reduction, a real issue as well, um, drugs and mental health. And mental health is one of the biggest issues that we've been facing for years. There's an organization called Blue Zones, right Beverly?
Yeah, yeah.
And they've been doing some very interesting work, um, and I understand not just in one particular city, but across multiple cities. The city of Palm Springs is embracing the work of Blue Zones. Beverly, can you give us just a quick background on that? Cause I know you've been very.
Yeah, I can. The Blue Zone Project was a project funded originally by the National Steel. And, uh, it was, uh, given to a gentleman to, um, find the commonalities for areas within the world that have, uh, a, a high propensity for people to live over a hundred. And I think he identified seven areas, but the interesting thing from our point of view is one of them was a little late. Which is kinda fun, cause it's right down the road. And then what he did was look at the, at the, uh, commonalities among those communities and how we're not causal, we don't need correlation of why there were these people that now there to be hundreds, hundreds, twenty, thirty, whatever. Um, from that, he, he, he published all that information and of course became quite well-known when talking about these things, but then, um, some organization, I'm not sure how the segue went, but an organization picked it up as being able to uh, identify some of these elements that might then add to the quality of life, particularly for seniors. And in terms of, of help, helping them to have a better life and perhaps even extend longevity. But, but there was a huge movement among the senior and, um, gender logical, um, community to try to see, to do what's called compressed uh, morbidity, so that what, what the quality of life extends for a much longer time and the type, type time that you're ill as an older person is compressed until you die. So that you're not going through years and years and years of, of suffering. Uh, the Blue Zone is focused on that concept of compressing morbidity to the end of your life. And, um, I think Coachella is another city that has, has adopted this program. Um, Palm Springs is looking at it. Um, I think it's fascinating. It will, it will probably focus initially on things like transportation, walking paths, bike paths, things like that in order to get people out. Well, engagement is a big issue on my Blue Zone in keeping people, giving people purpose and giving people, uh, socialization and engagement in their lives.
We have this briefing, uh, not too long ago, a few months back, and also I think, um, Netflix is gonna have a special August variant.
I think they are too.
Yeah, you know, I, I just had some comments. I was doing some research about this and, um, Daniel Gutner is the guy who really started it. But, um, uh, there were some questions about some of this research and whether or not he really certified people's, um, death certificates and social security. I, I mean, I, you know, and, and there's very little in the academic literature. And so, you know, as a physician, I'm sort of, um, into that kind of a, a point of view. But I know that, um, Deputy, uh, Department of Public Health, her name is Dr. Shulin Sang, is kind of sponsoring this with the, uh, University of California Riverside. So I have an appointment with her, um, uh, about two weeks to, um, to speak to her about it. Because, you know, is this more like the quality environmental life that she is, that the, um, that the Department of Public Health is proposing? Or is this really about getting people to live to a hundred? Because the expected life ex, the life expectancy of a lot of California counties has gone down in the past two years. Some of it's COVID, some of it's some chronic disease. So if life expectancy is going down, you know, how do we improve life expectancy? And, and that, that was how I was sort of framing it up, but, um, but anyway, I'll, I have more to understand it because the Coachella Valley was chosen. Um, because of some of the work they were doing environmentally and the quote, like the CV, um, bicycle path here in Palm Springs would fit into that. Um, but, um, um, yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that's a comment. Yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah, the Department of Public Health has just done a, a full, um, program and, um, that is fascinating in terms of looking at quality of life issues and various, uh, components of it. And they've, they've, uh, you can go down by the code and look at all of the elements that are there and then, and then particular policy issues that might come from that.
The Department of Public Health actually issued that in California, yeah.
Yeah, it's quite interesting. If, if you get a chance, can you, can you know what the, have you got the website, Ken?
But I wanna say about Loma Linda, Loma Linda is a Seventh Day Adventist community. No alcohol, no caffeine, clean living.
Product of, actually, that was one of the things I was gonna mention. On the anecdotal level, I'm, I'm not a Seventh Day Adventist, but we, my family are at Seventh Day Adventists, that we would actually go to Loma Linda all the time for church, but if that, that's level of the um, health, you know, the, the, the sort of level of food and alcohol, taking out alcohol, those, yeah, those, those things are part of the, that lifestyle that we help with, you know, getting folks to live longer. But yeah, there's a, there's definitely, definitely a direct link between the Filipino Seventh Day Adventist, you know, group that's here and Loma Linda. They've been totally like, um, building up, and actually, what's a good example is Lola's Casino. Who, uh, Michelle Casillo, who does Lola's Casino here in Palm Springs, is actually based, um, on a, a lot of the teachings from her family, but they were all from of Seventh Day Adventists, like recipes and, you know, men, you know, level of connection and intuition.
So a question to the commission, what is the human rights angle to this?
Environmental health. Is that a human right? Clean air.
Which goal? Can we go back to the, can we please go back to the goals of the Human Rights Commission? And if we can agree on the goals, then let's, we can assess whether any of what you're talking about fits, supports those.
I think that's a good point, David. And I think if you look at the, uh, uh, the city facilities and, uh, community designs, and those are the areas that um, probably should be integrated with, uh, the, making sure that the human rights are being met of the population that they're serving in terms of the, in terms of what, whatever is being uh, proposed in terms of infrastructure improvement or infrastructure design. Um, some of the things I think about is TV link, for example, which was a great idea that, uh, had some real problems. Um, and I was involved in the origin of that too. I just wondered why I did it, but.
I guess I'm asking you to look at the seven, or I'm sorry, eight goals that are on the rules and procedures, Doc, okay? And do we wanna streamline those goals down? And then we can make sure they support the city's two primary strategic priorities, quality of life and community infrastructure. I think it would be huge if we can do that.
Have these been edited?
No, that's what we're here to do there.
I thought you, I thought there was a document about recommended edits.
Not, not, not to the goals part. I did come up with recommended edits further into the document, not the goals, cause that's something we collectively need to agree on. Our goals for next year, keeping in mind that they need to support quality of life and community infrastructure as defined by the city in the other documents. We have to have two documents in front of you. Okay? And we can, we don't have to have eight, we can have three. But they have to be SMART goals. Specific, measurable, achievable. I forget what the R stands for.
Realist.
Realistic and timely, I think is.
What do we do that's measurable?
How do you measure?
How, how do you measure? You mean, how many, how many mess we showed up, how much education?
You define it. We define it.
Yeah, what are the metrics? I think we can come up with.
We define the metrics of meeting that, so we know whether we achieved it at the next, when we meet a year from now, we have to be able to say this is our goal in August twenty twenty-three. We met it and here's how we met it.
We showed up at these meetings, we met it. Is that it?
There's lots of ways of measuring, but first you have to agree on the goal.
As far as what we do, I don't know that there's a lot of ways. Anyway, yeah.
Let's tackle the goals first. Do we wanna stick with these eight goals? Do we wanna condense them, revise them?
David, what do you suggest?
Let's talk about them one by one, I suppose, and I think number three is probably the most important. And it kind of piggybacks off of what Commissioner Ramarand was talking about. If we're gonna go out and recruit somebody to even be a liaison, well, that's if we recruited somebody, then that's measurable. You could say a year from now, John Joe from the homeless community is now a liaison. So we brought this person together in common support of human rights issues. So that's just an example.
I, I guess just something else is like, what do we consider human rights issues? I know I've looked at different city human rights committees, including San Francisco and San Diego. How are we, this is probably broader, not gonna be the answer today, but what are the human rights issues that we, ooh.
Part of material I ordered for you to teach the children.
Let's start there.
I'd like to go around the room and tell me what is a human right. Just name one, whatever you think might be a human.
Should write those down.
And I'll see if they're in book.
Are you writing down?
I'll start since I have the book.
He's just writing down letters, they're not actual comprehensible words.
We are all born free and equal. That is a human right. Anybody else?
Or you want us to give you one?
Yeah.
Oh, what is the human rights? Pick one human right.
Pick any human right. That's what I.
I just, I would say access to healthcare is a human right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Access to education, that's correct.
The right not to be bullied, to be. I mean, in a way, I'm sure it's implied, even one of the rights. Don't discriminate.
Do not discriminate, yeah.
The right to life and freedom and safety. No slavery. No torture. You have rights no matter where you go. We are all equal before the law. Your human rights are protected by law. No unfair detainment, the right to trial. We're always innocent till proven guilty. The right to privacy, freedom to move, the right to seek a safe place to live. That's the homeless piece. Right to a nationality, marriage and family, we can choose to have one. The right to your own things. Freedom of thought, freedom of expression, the right to public assembly, the right to democracy, the right uh, social security, which is the right to affordable housing, medicine, education, childcare, and enough money to live on. And medical help if we are ill or old.
And the right to women's choice of their bodies.
Those are all constitutional rights, and I think that that's. Really, it's the international. Human rights, yeah. I'm gonna finish. Workers' rights, that's something I think in Palm Springs we ought to think about. I think we need to continue to push for a higher minimum wage via the city council. We have so many of our underemployed people that must work two full-time jobs in order to survive. The right to play, food and shelter for all, the right to education, the right to copyrights, a fair and free world, responsibility to others, and no one can take away your human rights. So I think, you know, we talk about human rights and I think about non-discrimination and I think about this and you think about that. But these are the designated human rights that we're supposed to support. And I think based on what we read in this document, no matter how old or how inartfully it was written, I think the point of Palm Springs City Council is to make this city kind of a model of one that observes.
Human rights.
And that's how they went through all this carrying on to come up with these, you know, two areas with this one that we looked at before. But as we go forward, I think we need to make sure that we're staying focused, not only on those two city goals, but the actuality of human rights. Cause we're short in our city on a lot of things that are contain, contained in this declaration.
So I have a question, cause this is kind of goes to the first one, which is the relative community education programs, and this is all about education.
Right.
When you order these materials, do you have to pay for them? Are they free?
No, I paid for them. I, no, I don't mind.
So. So this is great information that, could we use some of this information to develop some kind of a slide deck, a training program, some talking points, things that we can include on our website? I think the dissemination of this information is critical.
Um, sure.
And that would be measurable.
Right.
That would be a way a year from now to do exactly what you just said, in support of the very first goal. It's also, I believe, consistent with improving quality of life and to some degree, community infrastructure. But that also is gonna me- require someone from the city to step up and give us, either do the work or give us access to put it on the website or reproduce what the vice chair has and go out to the community and educate them about human rights.
You know, I don't get it though. What are you gonna say? These are the human rights. Okay, the, the, these are, these are, this is the laundry list of the human rights.
Okay.
Yeah. So what? I mean, what's next?
That's a good question.
It implies action.
Absolutely.
It does, but you can't. It's hard to take a lot of action. It's kind of like the point you made about how are we gonna help the homeless if we don't even know who they are? Go out at seven o'clock in the morning and figure out what's going on before we try to come up with a plan. If we're trying to be the Human Rights Commission, between the, the group of us, we could only name two or three. I think we have some self-education and then some community education that we could all benefit from. And this thing gets human rights for youths, but you know, most of us have about a fifth or. But you know, most of us have about a fifth or sixth mentality. But you know, our city includes all of us. Including new physicians over there, now lawyers over there. Uh, but I'm saying, you know, population in general and bilingual community and so on and so forth. It's, I don't think it's a bad level to talk about these things. And, but I'm sure there's human rights education programs for adults as well. I'm sure there would be. Are, is there an opportunity for us as a group to enhance our own education on human rights and in so doing to come up with areas where we believe, as you just said, you believe there's a shortfall in, in workers' rights?
Right.
And then go through the, the uh our council to say, are these, do these fit with yours and is this something that you want us to go with and to develop? Hey, you know, would that give us some incentive, some, something that, that would be valuable to do, something deliverable? That might, might be able to influence some action at the city level. If we could provide some sort of research or documentation and, and advisory capacity to the city council to look at our living wage in Palm Springs and that were passed. I just think that that would be absolutely huge for a lot of people. We have either very wealthy or very poor people here. They don't have too many of them. You know, we've got people that are comfortable and people that are struggling and I would love to see um, living wage, and that's just one of my.
Just talk to where that fits into their two strategic priorities.
Well.
It would be a big, I love the idea, but I'd love to sell it to them and I'd love to tie it to one of the seven things you see on page five.
Thing, if somebody's working two full-time jobs, it's a drain on their mental health. If they don't work two full-time jobs, sometimes they can't, they're not, they become unattractive. They don't have access to affordable housing. Some cities have a policy where, you know, all these beautiful new developments we see around town, there's a policy that for each beautiful new development you build, you build X number of low-income affordable housing units. So I'm thinking more in a strategic nature instead of going out and doing tasks. I guess it frustrates me when I'm on the Human Rights Commission for three years and, you know, I've walked in ten parades, but I haven't accomplished anything. Well, Donna, you do, you do know that there is a project at the council right now to make the developers all pay for affordable housing as they go. I think that's great, you know, I think that's great and, and you know. I mean, we don't, again, we don't wanna be redundant. I don't, if they're already doing that, fine. It's just like the homeless navigation center. That's why I can't get too excited about homelessness. Because I feel that as slowly as it's moving, which everything in this town moves slowly, they have a plan and this navigation center should meet that. And I think these stopgap measures that rise and the police department and all these other folks are doing hopefully is gonna somehow hold us over until we get a better solution. Um, no, no. I, I just feel like we need to think a little bit bigger, maybe in a little bit more. We, we seem to have a conflict between the weeds and the, and the, between the tactical and the strategic, and you know, where, where do we want it, maybe, where do we want to start? Yeah. Um, I think you kind of always have to start with the strategic. And then we gotta look at the, at the tactics and then quality for that. And I don't think that we're comfortable enough yet. That's a big, oh, I don't know, I don't, I don't, but my, this is also.
I, I'd say, you know, I would put tactical, I mean, what can we do except for show up for, you know, who to bully?
Well, that's a tactic.
I don't know. I mean, that's what I'm at, I guess.
Yeah, I know, that's what you're asking. I know, I know. That's a good question, yeah.
I mean, we can sit and decide that we just wanna focus on trying to get our own house in order for the next twelve months, and that's fine, but let's be clear on what we want to do.
Why couldn't we have like a three-month goal of coming up of educating ourselves to go to a higher level of what human rights are and then deciding among ourselves which of the elements that we think are most important that we, with the needs. And then develop the tactics from that for the next three months and then spend the last, the second six months.
Okay.
Doing.
Well, you know, would that be like a white paper advising the city council about what our recommendations are? Is that what we would be talking about?
Probably along the way, maybe, maybe progress reports as opposed to white papers, you know, maybe a progress report, this is what we see as the, the the most important strategies, then these are, and these are the, if, 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 if you, if we have your concurrence, then we go to the tactical level. If we have your concurrence, then we go to the.
Really, it's a great first step. I think personally, my hope is that in maybe one to two years, the city of Palm Springs takes the Human Rights Commission more seriously by actually funding it. Putting some meat behind it. Maybe we have to just educate, as we educate ourselves about human rights, we have to maybe educate the city council about what you need to actually implement and execute a human rights plan. If you wanna make Palm Springs the model for human rights, then you gotta do more than just and have a commission that can simply, yeah, we can't do anything. We don't have any resources.
This is why we need a whiteboard.
There's, there's an education component on the table, right?
Yeah.
This is an education component, and this is kind of like the first thing that we should really consider.
Um, you know, I, I just wanna say, look at the Human Rights Commission of some of the bigger cities. Uh, San Francisco, it, it, they're incorporated actually into the city council, but take a look, and maybe that would be another kind of a, um, a take-home, um, um, task.
Like, part of our education.
Part of our education, right. A lot of them are, are having to do with like, you know, immigrant, um, you know, care, um, um, healthcare access.
San Francisco's dealing with a huge crisis of homelessness as well. It was in the news today, right?
Which is.
Gumps is, is for filing all kinds of um, claims against the city.
Yeah, well, there's gonna be so many lawsuits that that's gonna.
Lawsuits left and right.
Did you say gum?
Gumps the store.
Gumps is a, is a length of store for San Francisco for years.
Then Karen Bass in L.A. also is, is dealing with this as well, but it's just now building housing. You know, there's the mental health, there's supporting, there's economic support, blah, blah, blah.
What she's doing is interesting, and she's basically taking a lot, uh, paper off the streets, putting it in a hotel, but she hasn't developed the infrastructure yet, and she said that he's gonna go ahead and do that and not wait for the infrastructure, but she said if she waits for that, nothing's gonna happen. So it's interesting. I don't, you know, but they're seeing some, at least some, some movement off the, off the temp cities and off the streets.
Yeah. I'm just spinning a lie, that temp city, just off the, LA Boulevard, but just off of Hollywood Boulevard.
I know.
So the action is to educate ourselves.
But let's, let's, let's do that on what, what David's saying. Let's do that one at a time, so that, okay, we, at the end of three months, what we wanna do is be able to come up with a paper that that delineates these are the elements that we think are most important for human rights in the city of Palm Springs, and we want, then we deliver that to the city council. And from there, we, we get, we get agreement, we go to the next step.
You know, a, a lot of, um, you've been on a lot of, um, you know, boards and organizations, like, I mean, like the desert, uh, healthcare regional district. They do an inventory, they do an inventory of healthcare needs, you know, um, and, and they just put it in a, um, a document that's, you know, publicly facing what their strategy is, what their, um, what they've identified and where they're gonna allocate funds to. They have like eighty-five million dollars or something. But anyway, so what I'm thinking is, do we, is there another part of this? Do we take an inventory about in the city where the need is? Which human rights are missing, the gap, or we're not?
There's already huge amounts of documentation for that, both with this public health thing, also HART, those online, they, they have a lot. Um, let us sample HART, AKRC, AKRC's happening, uh, research, they have, uh, they do research that was actually originally sponsored by the Healthcare District, and then eventually became their own, uh, organization.
She's talking about inventory.
No, but these, these give all of the issues for the problematic.
But it, it should be focused on human rights in the city of Palm Springs. It's actually an excellent idea.
Needs assessment for residents.
Because that, I think, would be a really good thing to put before the city council, the state of human rights in the city of Palm Springs.
Because. Based on.
Yeah, we can develop.
Well, that's it. Now we have to figure out how do we do that needs assessment?
Yeah, based on what.
Given that we have just the nine of us, right, in J.
Um, Jay, you know, is the, um, community and economic development of the city. Did you have any thoughts?
Um, no, I think this is a great discussion that you're getting it allowed there, so I really don't wanna poke into it too much or deflate any of it, so.
This is where we struggle, because we come up with these great ideas, but then when you try to implement them, we have no money, we have no human resources, we have nine people.
But all I'm, all I'm hearing so far is like whether or not we should put a table at a, at a, uh, what is it, Buddha, Buddha bullying, that's, that's the only thing I've heard, and, and. But you know, that doesn't cost a lot of money. I, I can find that.
After, um, though, you know, after taking this inventory needs assessment, we make an advisory, um, recommendation to the city council.
How do you do the needs assessment?
We do.
Who's gonna develop the survey? Who's gonna administer the survey? Who's gonna tabulate the results?
Let's, let's educate ourselves to the first degree what those are and determine what we think are the issues. We can then determine, we can then, you know, talk to some of the agencies in town and see if we feel those are being met.
What's that gonna be doing with the homeless?
Yeah, exactly. If you're seeing the homeless, and if, if that is one of the things that comes out of the right, which, which Donna, you said it was, you said there was a homeless thing in there.
But the homeless count is also very.
A survey like that could technically not be too difficult. I mean, you could, if we come to an idea of a definition, like a list of all these human rights that we feel are like, we have defined and educated ourselves that are human rights. And then we could make a survey, it can be online, it can be physical, you have people pick what is important to you, what affects you directly, and then have a type bar at the bottom, uh, like describe your issues, describe your experiences with it, and we can go through those and read through those and see like what not only is a reoccurring issue that happens the most or, uh, extremity things that people have gone through, and we, it, it could be a, it could be a Google thing. I know how to make one.
But you have to do it, you have to do it multiple ways.
It has to be visible.
Have to be able to go out to the homeless community.
Right.
Who don't have access to internet or cell phones or stuff and survey them. So there's multiple components to a survey.
The things we wanted to be surveyed and looked at and really and had and agreed to it and had the council agree with that. We could actually hire a heart and they do this stuff for a living. They're not super friends with heart. It's health assessment.
And research.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, Jenny is a pro with this. This is what she does for a living. They're not super friends. No, no, but, but they're, they're, they, they helped to just, they started them and built them, you know, they're, this is, they're designed to help the community. So, you know, then we say, we want money to do this, it would be, you know.
Yeah, but actually, I'm hoping that Lily, Lily, you're gonna make it fun, too. We're gonna gamify it.
I play a lot of video games.
No, we're not gonna like.
You should see my resume. It's got like rainbow logo for it.
Let's, let's define a little bit of action here, because this is, again, a great idea and it's surfing like the top thing that we could do in the next few months. First piece is education ourselves.
Yeah.
How long will it take us to educate ourselves on these issues realistically?
Well, we have one, one meeting a month, so we.
We meet once a month.
So we have to assign, you know, each of us or some, or whatever, anybody that's interested to be able to present, I think our focus and whatever, uh, you know, maybe Donna, you can come up with the segments.
It's not gonna occur to them.
But I mean, okay, but if there is, if there's nine of us and we could split up, like, cause I know you were saying like three months, and I know that's just like a number that you threw out, but we, we could pair in group, or we can have certain people work on the same thing and come together or something like that, you know what I mean? And every month, we have that group. Cause you know, high school, every month have that group present that thing, and I'm not sure if that violates the Brown Act, Jay.
The suggestion is forming an ad hoc committee to, to work on this?
I'm about to graduate, so.
I don't know, here's a thought.
I know.
What if we, there's nine of us, what if we split into two groups, five and four? Right? And five commissioners work together and come up with their, their set of human rights. And in addition, try to map those human rights to how they improvement of those human rights would support quality of life as defined in this document. The other four commissioners would do the same thing for community infrastructure. And we say, within, by the October meeting, everybody has to come back with their presentation, that gives us two months. I mean, that's putting us on the hook, or every commissioner has to commit to doing that homework. It's like two separate ad hoc committees, one focused on quality of life, one community infrastructure, but we're kind of killing two birds with one stone. We're educating ourselves on human rights, what they mean, what they're if you wanna tackle the state of human rights in the city, great, but tie them specifically to the two strategic priorities the city has said we should focus on going forward.
And so each group then identifies the pieces of the human rights definition.
That will support these two strategic initiatives.
All right, three groups of three, because you don't wanna get in a majority of their groups. Three groups of three.
Well, we could still do four and five, and I can just be the fifth.
No, you can't have a majority. That's what it becomes. You're gonna have to have a public hearing. No, that's what I'm getting at the brown. Yeah, three groups of three, that way you don't have the Brown Act stuff that.
But wouldn't, I think it's only majority of voting members, and if I'm the fifth, it wouldn't be a majority, it would just be a straight, it'd be a split in half, right?
But you still have a majority of like commissioners.
Okay.
Or we could each take one human right that we are individually passionate about and educate ourselves a little more and share that information and maybe have three people present next month, three people present the month after.
Even better.
That way, we don't get stuck in the commission or the group, and he didn't do this and she didn't do that. We can each be responsible for our own.
So I love that idea. How do we get our hands into the list of all the human rights so that we can say, I wanna do this, I wanna do that? But you don't, you don't buy that.
You can go on our website, or you all heard and read them earlier, if there was something that spoke to you, you can pick it now, or I'll send it out to you, whatever you wanna do. Is, is that available online or are there, is there an organization? This organization is called youthforhumanrights.org. Okay, is there a, something not, adults for human rights or something? Could I, could, could we ask you to research and find us a website and then send it to us and then we pick out what we want?
The UN Declaration.
You're, you're.
It's just broken down with easier language to comprehend.
That's a, that's a youth-focused like.
But each of us. There, there's. But perhaps we should all be working from the same document? I can.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just the UN International, that Universal Declaration of Human Rights, we all.
So we all work from that.
Yeah, just pick one human right.
Okay.
Describe it, define it, educate yourself on it. Tie it to either quality of life or community infrastructure as best you can. That would help give us a roadmap.
I like that.
And can we agree to come back? What do we say? Free on September three and October three and November? Is that what we're doing?
That works for me, but the people that are gonna do September, you know, have to be committed to.
So you'd have to have kind of a freer schedule in the next just to really commit to it instantly.
How, how do we prevent, you know, people choosing the same items?
Well, let's choose. Well, we need a coordinator for the project, so.
You learn it fast. Beverly, when were you a year ago?
She's got spine, I like it.
If y'all don't respond to me. Why, why don't you, why don't you give us, why don't you give us?
Give us a due date.
A run, ten days or so. I'll send you out the list of the rights. And then, and then you say, okay, hold on, so I do coordinate it.
Can you send the list out to Jay and he says that, and everybody within one week's time has to hit? One, at least one human right from that list.
Okay, I'm sorry, what is the deliverable?
Here's what you have to do. I'm gonna send you a copy of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights from the United Nations.
Okay.
You're gonna look at those thirty rights. There's only nine of us, and I think that's fine. Some of those are redundant, we're okay with that in the U.S. This is for the world. But think about what appeals to you in Palm Springs that you would like to learn more about and educate your fellow commissioners.
But think about what appeals to you in Palm Springs that you would like to learn more about and educate your fellow commissioners about. Um, and present, you know, five to six minutes, uh, kind of upcoming meeting. And then next to that right, I, I need your name and I need the month that you're willing to do it. Those of you that are, go get it. Tell me you're doing such a, those of you that know you've got a schedule issue, push it back a little bit. But that way I will try to make the schedule compliant with your wishes. If I have to move some people around, then so.
I would, I would also add maybe add a second one in case, in case you run into everybody wants to do one.
Okay.
Put your top two. Put your top two.
That's great.
That's good.
Now we, you know, we make everybody marginally unhappier, but.
So, and so three people will present separately.
And that presentation has to be how that relates to what's happening in Palm Springs. In the United States.
And I'll watch this video and dig into this a little bit more and do some more rights on adult human rights. To see if there's something that we could maybe show a, a video at a meeting or something that is shorter.
We've got our actions.
Yeah, that should give us input for the next three months and the next six months.
And just, just another question. So how it applies to Palm Springs? I guess we'll do our own internal research. To better understand what the need of the community is.
A citizen, a resident, you have a skill in a certain area.
Try to put your southern shoes.
This is not a scientific document.
Your value.
You mean, it's not data driven?
But you could think of it, okay, high school perspective, you could think of it as an English essay. So the way that we know, but the way that we do it for now, like in my AP Language and Composition classes and with my AP Literature class. You're given a prompt, you answer the prompt with however you feel with your argument, the way that you feel, and then you take evidence that supports your argument. So it's your feelings and your feelings are completely valid as, as evidence, but there's also the level of support of. Other people's opinions have said this too, so.
So we're in agreement, right?
I'm not sure that flies.
And we don't need to take a vote on.
But I mean, like.
I got it. No.
In a presentation.
No. Excellent. If that is the case, I would like to move us to. I would like to move us to an, another important item for discussion for today's agenda. And that was the suggestions that were made by Commissioner Gignolo to revise, um. The rules and procedures of the human rights commission. And he also had some very specific notes on the agenda format.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. So you have the rules and procedures document. Right? Thirteen pages. Putting aside goals because I think we've kind of talked a lot about goals. I mean, I, if it's okay, maybe we just walk through section by section. I did go through some. I did go through the document and specifically made some recommendations for revisions. But I skipped things like role of the commission. But right away I can. See that the, the role of this commission to establish a budget and funding courses for the commission. Doesn't really make any sense if we don't have that. How can we fulfill that role? So I would strike that language from role of the commission and just leave it. The commission will act as an advisory body to the mayor and city council. With regard to human rights issues. I'm not sure why First Amendment is there.
Yeah. Let's strike that out.
I would maybe strike that out. I don't know what the author was thinking. And then just leave it to establish policy to, we don't establish policy, right? We recommend.
For the operation of the commission.
So we get to.
Oh, I guess we do establish po.
Right.
Policy for the operation of the commission, which really is this document. And then just take out and to establish a budget and funding sources for the commission. But we have a very limited role, acting as an advisory body and establishing. An operation policy for the commission. Basically our role. Unless we get a change from in the charter. Um, I didn't touch any commissioners, I didn't touch subpoena power. I don't know if that's even accurate. That's a question for council. I didn't write it. I'm not taking it out. Role of staff, I think that speaks to you, Jay, right? You provide coordination and clerical support and act as a liaison to other city departments. And serve as a resource to the commission. I don't have any issues with that.
Well, and let me add, I don't think anyone was here. We had a, uh. Community development administrator who was actually the liaison. And so he was able to spend much more time and engage quite a bit more with the commission. And, um, we may be able to bring that position back, it's just a matter of time, but. If that happens, this commission will be a big part of that individual's work.
Was that person default, was it a staff person?
That was a staff person.
Department?
In my department, retired and the position has never been, been filled since.
So you're thinking you might fill it.
It's not as easy as it being up to me. I would have filled it four years ago if it was up to me, but. It's down in the budget, right? And so now it's up to, uh, our ability to get it, uh, filled with our HR department. That's great news.
Is there anything this commission could do to help expedite that?
Probably not.
If we all signed a letter to.
No, I say probably not because I know.
Represent us, Jay. Get that position filled. Well, it would relieve you. I mean, you spend a lot, a lot of times not around with us too.
But you had one on the organization structure. Do you want to just cover that one? So under organization structure. Where was that? Items in, under B for Bravo, towards the end of the paragraph?
Item to be added to the agenda where a need to act or else subsequent to the posting of the agenda. At a two-third vote of the membership or unanimous if less than two-thirds of the members are present. A regular meeting may be adjourned for lack of a quorum to a new time. If within five days from the original meeting day, no new agenda posting is required.
I don't know. I just found it confusing to read.
It is a little bit like, looks like it sounds like you're jumping through loopholes, but it like makes sense, but I did have to do some extra thinking.
But I think, I think the key here, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, you said when the agenda is posted for the public, um. View that, 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 that point, there is no way we can amend anything on the agenda other than after they remove it. Before the agenda gets accepted correctly.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, that, that's, that's pretty much it. I just wanted.
Well, there is a way to, uh, actually amend. Subsequent to the posting of the agenda, there is a way to amend the agenda if two-thirds of the, of the commissioners. Say this should be added to the agenda, a vote can be taken at that meeting.
Yeah, but how does that impact the fact that the agenda needs to be made public? What is it? Seventy-two hours before the meeting?
It's written right in the handbook.
I mean, this. With what I was recently told about adding items to the agenda having to be on an emergency basis and has to be a legitimate emergency. You know, it, it just can't be added to add another topic. So that it's here. Uh, you know, nineteen ninety was it, it's documented and, um. Have there been updates to the Brown Act that have changed? So it's kind of something we need to get a better understanding of. I mean, just. De facto, this could be, um, out of date, so.
So this is the document that David prepared?
David prepared these, these.
Right, I went through the.
That should be checked for the reality, because I, I mean, that just sounds like you could actually do the.
Exactly right. That's Brown, that's Brown Act. And so I think we have much, much wiggle room there. But we do have in terms of the agenda format and David came up with some suggestion there.
So yeah, I mean, you see it right on, on, you see the current format, but I think we've already started moving towards the proposed format. So I'm just saying that for all agendas going forward, we follow the proposed format. As I've listed it. Which kind of is what we did today. And just change it in our document.
I'm sorry. The only comment I would make on that, David, is, is the chairperson's report, perhaps come prior to the new business. So that if there are elements that, that we need to be aware of before we go through things.
Yeah, because right now chairs' comments are basically, uh, one of the first items in the agenda, yeah.
We can switch it. Do you just wanna put chairperson's report before new business?
I think after public comment, yeah.
Alright.
Was there a reason you put it last?
No. Not necessarily. Maybe my thought was the chair would just kind of do a summarization. I don't think it's that big a deal.
My experience, new businesses have come last. In, in, in usually the new business is your last agenda item.
Yeah.
Human Rights Commission Ad Hoc Committee.
Yeah, I would go from public comment to chairperson to human rights ad hocs and then, uh.
What I don't see in this proposed is the item for, um, additional comments from commissioners and student representative. That's a good question. Is it needed? Cause you know, oftentimes a commissioner will say, I've got something I want to share and. And it wasn't in the agenda and if an item is not on the agenda, it cannot be discussed. You know that, right?
Cannot be a new business?
If that is the section, we're gonna call it a, a new business and then commissioners can raise their hand and I got something to share.
I don't know how that would work with the agenda. That's, that sounds like a slippery slope.
I think it's commissioner comments that's in the old version. That, um, that all usually comes before we adjourn.
Yeah. Okay, so, so you should, we could put it back in, uh, item fifteen.
It's there, um, fifteen.
Human Rights Commission.
You have the ad hoc committee report, which is basically what, what you guys been doing, what are you bringing back to the commission?
But we're not gonna go through all those.
No, 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 that's what I, well, that's, yeah, I'm not even, I don't even think we need all these standing committees.
Yeah.
But maybe that's, maybe that's where it comes after the ad hoc committee report, then maybe, uh, commissioner open forum or something.
We can add commissioner comments.
Because we also have to account that we have a student representative and really you have some great comments.
So I can just put, can I just add? Human Rights Commission Ad Hoc Committee Reports, requests and comments could be from any other commissioner, student representative. It's not. So that's the, where it would fall.
As long as it's not lost.
Okay, let me, let me ask you something. So what, what if it's whole agendizing? Does it have to be on the agenda? Um, of these comments, Human Rights Commission Ad Hoc Committee Reports, requests and comments.
It, yes, comments is on, it is on the agenda. Comments is on the agenda.
Yes.
What comments are made is not defined. We're not gonna get to that level of specificity.
This is, this is where I'm confused. What if a comment leads into like emotion or?
Right, that's, that's a point. Comment is not gonna lead to a vote, right?
Okay.
If it's not in the agenda, if an item is not on the agenda, we cannot discuss and take a vote.
Okay.
It has to be part of the agenda.
But if you comment.
But if you bring a last comment, last minute comment and I, you know, we didn't have the time to talk about this. I wanted to bring this to the commission and so on and so forth. Great, thank you for sharing. We cannot take a vote because it's not an actual item.
And how does it get on the next agenda?
But we can then decide as a commission that it's gonna go into the next agenda.
Okay.
So that we can then take action and take a vote.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I, I, I needed that.
Based on your comment, if it leads to, we need to put this on next month's agenda. The executive committee, when it develops the agenda, will put it.
Make sure that if you said, I would like for us to take a vote on this. Then we record it, it goes into the next month's agenda and then we can discuss it and then take a vote.
Thank you. Okay.
And then the reality is, yeah, we're looking at the, the current, uh, it's not the current, right? So we have to make sure that it's updated to what we actually do. So like, we do have. The next meeting on, on our current one, but it's not on this, on this one on paper. It's, it's what we always use. So that, that is to, that's the thing that's kind of confusing here too. We're looking at this, the recommendation based on an agenda format. That is coming from the rules, but the realities are agenda items are actually listed already on, and that, that format is already there. It needs to be. In alignment before we like decide that it's gonna.
Yeah, we had a couple of instances when we launched a discussion and people were like, oh, what do we do? It's like, we can't. If it's not in the agenda, we can't take action.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm just trying to get away from this and away from what's in the old document from nineteen whatever hundred.
Ninety-six, ninety-eight.
And come up with a, and we'll modify the rules, update the rules to reflect. What you see on this document. Then we can just review it again, agendize it and review it in a formal meeting.
So I'm hearing that's an action point, right, David?
What?
A redraft of this.
Yeah, that whole doc, that thirteen page document will be updated based on what we talk about right now.
To do a draft?
I think it's a word.
Well.
I don't know if it's, I can do it because I can convert PDF to Word.
I agree with you about the notion of having all these.
Where are you?
Well, I'm kind of back and forth here.
We're still on agenda?
On the agenda, on the ad hoc reports, commissioner reports and all that kind of stuff. Right now, on this thing, it talks about mediation committee, communications committee. Youth education, gender, lesbian, blah, blah, blah. We have a different set of those. Type of, of, of committees. And unfortunately, I don't have a copy of an agenda from our previous. But what I don't want to do by removing those. Is remove the focus on those. I don't think we dare want to lose track. Of our veterans affairs and, you know, some of that kind of stuff.
The master calendars and.
This is what I want to have this conversation. I want to understand. What standing committees we really need to have. And do we, first of all, do we need to have them? And if so, what exactly do we need to have and what are they supposed to do?
That they're responsible for doing an annual educational forum.
Where are you looking?
I'm on page six. So the youth committee, the African-American, Latino, seniors and disability and religious are all responsible for. Producing an annual educational forum.
Well, I know, that's why we. So that's why we needed to start from scratch.
No, I know, but it says shall be responsible. So, you know, that's what they were supposed, they're supposed to do. I agree with you that we shouldn't have them. I think ad hoc committees will, and I think committee structure should come out of what our determination of our strategic. Um, you know, rights are that we determine in the next few months.
Well, that's why I went the ad hoc route.
Yeah, I like that.
Like, even if we just for now, take the commission development mediation committee. Commission Development Mediation Committee.
That's not on there, though.
In our, in this document, it's listed as a standing committee. Do we need a standing committee on mediation?
In previous agendas, we asked for a report on mediation.
But usually that report is. I've been trained in mediation.
On mediation was should the commission get a complaint? From the public about a human rights violation. They wanted at least two or so.
Oh, I totally agree with that.
To be so.
Do you need a committee, though?
I don't think you need a committee, but what what I'm concerned about is the loss of the thought process that that. Agenda item is there and is important, whether we need a whole, a report on it every month when a report is that there's no report, of course not. But somewhere it needs to be captured on some sort of. Uh, in some sort of the goals or experience or whatever.
It should be a goal, but I'm not sure.
Is it a function of the committee to be, to hear some place from the population, therefore then to mediate? So somewhere it's more functional than it is committee based.
That's true. And it's the same thing. We never have a Main Street liaison report. I mean, maybe we do. Well, we don't have a very, I mean.
Listen to this, monitor commissioner attendance at meetings and maintain statistical information for Human Rights Commission.
There you go.
Plan Task Force.
Social Justice Committee.
Yeah.
That's so important, but we got nothing to report because the thing fell apart.
That's why you have ad hoc. I mean, if you've got something.
If it is important.
You either create the ad hoc or then during the comment section, you say, hey, I. I'm Vice Chair Shepherd and I have something to say about mediation to bring to your attention. And that will either result in. The establishment of an ad hoc committee or an agenda item for the next meeting.
An action item.
But I don't see the need to have on a recurring monthly basis. No report.
What about requiring an appointed individual or individuals to be responsible?
Is that sometimes commissioners don't have the ability to join the meeting? I mean, that person who's appointed.
Yeah.
It's not, it just, that section gets blown away.
Provides a report. I don't know, a designated liaison as the. Because a lot of this goes to the legal community anyway. I don't know how much we've been involved in.
Evan, you've been listening to that.
A deviation before he had five cases.
Yeah.
It had nothing to do with human rights.
Right.
Small claims, I.
Oh.
Don and I both members, and I've been doing it almost two years. It's volunteer, of course. Because it came up, we needed a mediator on the on the commission. So nothing has come up where I can. Be in uh involved with say, human rights. But it's a small claims court, that's why.
Oh, yeah. But. When you look at the agenda and you see all, you have Desert Gateway and you have veterans and you have, you have all of those. What is a way that we wouldn't have to say, Glenn, what's your report on X, Y and Z every month? But we don't lose the impetus behind that.
I can bring it up with that issue like with veterans. I I read a lot of stuff about veterans. I'm a veteran, so. But and uh. So and then of course, the desert community, uh try to get involved in that, it's uh, but it's just, it's kind of tough to have something every month.
Yeah, yeah.
So who would move to that? And then for example, we would have, you know, Commissioner Vigno report, Commissioner Flood report, Commissioner Rank the report. Then you can report on things that you've been involved. Prior to the meeting, if something comes up that needs to be agendized. Or an action item needs to.
Just bring it up and bring it up. Part of your comment, right?
And so, for example, you know, this month I was with the the task force, police and the LGBTQ community and. Here's what I need to report to you. And maybe an action item comes out of that report and then it goes to the next agenda. If something needs to happen. At least that gives us something to report on various things that we've done. For the month instead of, okay, here comes this item. Commissioner Flood, nothing to report.
But it's interesting. My frustration with standing committees is that in between commission meetings, they never. Met, they never, it was very difficult to get commission members to me.
We did meet with the Social Justice Committee. We tried to get that off the ground.
But if you think there's a need for a standing committee, you know.
Well, I think the mediation thing is very important. I mean, we we did talk about the reality that that. One, there is an issue that we don't get a lot of response because folks don't know that what what our services are that are available. So. That in itself is a very tangible thing where we have to tell, you know, we have to remind folks that we do have mediation services. Because we don't, our meetings are not mediation service in meetings. Those have to happen, you know, offsite, you know, somewhere where they, those, those things happen. So. Folks don't even know what kind of mediation, you know, there, there is some literature that we do share so that folks know what kind of mediation is available. In terms of comping resolutions and things like that, but even during the boot to building last year, someone did come up to us with something that could have been mediated. So like that became, that that was a real like sort of a infrastructural issue, like, you know, we literally were in the public and. Someone actually told us like, oh, I had this tenant issue and it became like a harassment issue. You know, there's a whole bunch of stuff that could be. No, it it would, no, it didn't because we went to, um, I I wasn't gonna bring it, but someone was talking about it. And and I I totally respected the the sort of privacy.
Right.
So I'm I'm just letting you know. So that is actually an issue with us because one, we're sort of just passively saying, oh, we have mediation service, but no one really. Things that we really look at because we're looking at the reality that we're trained through community, um, um, you know, action partnership. To do small claims mediation for the skills part of it, but the reality is that Human Rights Commission does it for the human rights, you know, service of it. So we need to think of how those connect, you know, like one, we're not getting, that's the data thing. We're not getting a lot of requests for that kind of service. And then how do we make sure that we can recruit or, you know, at least outreach and let people know that this is available? You know, it's it's a free. It's a free service for the for our community to be able to like de- deal with, you know, a a real issue that they they're facing, you know, it could be physical, it could be like emotional. A lot of real, you know, real things that they're dealing with.
It goes back also to the fact that. No matter how much you discuss this. Outside of this building, not many people know what the Human Rights Commission is. I'm gonna remember the human, what's that? You know, what do you do? I mean, so we need to also.
Think with the Human Rights.
Yeah, yeah, I always think it's a human rights camp. Right, so we need just. Focus on Palm Springs to say, here we are, here's what we do. I mean, do we? So a boot on Thursday night, uh, Buddhist Fest or what?
Yeah.
This education actually is gonna give us the opportunity to really establish, you know, ourselves and our work.
The the agenda actually speaks to the history of why we were founded too, and that's one of the things that needs to be very, you know, that's why we looked at the standing committees. You saw, it's a, it's a real level of what priorities are there. This, this commission was founded because of the harassment of. Gay folks in warm sands. That was one of the big things like that was very, very much about this. So we're talking about. Uh, you know, homophobia as a priority or, you know, perpophobia. So we have to really look at why, you know, you know, again, the. Intrinsic real- reality of our history and how we keep that focus. And reality, the reality too is that that actually has transformed into. The relationship of the police with the LGBT community. It's not just about the LGBT community. It's actually about the police response to to hate crimes. So we we have to be very, very specific. It's not, you know, and that's what I think that is very much in our current agenda. It's very specific. I mean. We actually focus in on the United, um, I'm sorry, the the one, you know, organizations of, you know, organized neighborhoods. But Desert Highland is very specifically put on the agenda. So why? Because we have, we have our historic black neighborhoods that have been. Very much, you know, expelled from section fourteen and like, there's a whole history that is part of why this agenda.
So you're advocating for the Desert Island to be still be a standing committee?
Absolutely.
How many members are in that standing committee?
I don't, I I mean, that's the whole thing. No, but.
And what does it do and what do you want it to do?
But but this is what, David, it's not just about that. It's really what John just said, like, we could look at this nitty gritty. But the rea- the reality is that social justice and equity is not even on the priorities of this thing right now, of the, of that document. So we have to be able to look at why. You know, we were empowered to sit on that committee and go serve on another committee in the city and then we're coming back and tell you like that isn't even a meeting. You know, like, we can't even deal with social justice and equity because the city isn't even prioritizing it. So, yeah, that's an issue. And so, yeah.
It's an issue. I'm just trying to figure how does it fit into our structure?
It fits into the structure because it's it's been something that we we, it's a legacy. So we have to like think about it.
Going forward, do you want it to be a standing committee that meets on a biweekly basis?
I'm talking about the priorities of 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 this commission, not not the logistics of like whether or not we're gonna meet because the reality is that, no, none of these setting committees are meeting regularly the way that you're saying. And that's the reality, okay? So don't think that we're gonna be sitting there and gonna be all these meetings. They're not, we're we're volunteers. We're not gonna be able to do all of that. Being on key, but that's why even your question about the mission statement that being said at the beginning is, I have issues with that. Because that is very, very, that's palpable and people will be reminded every single meeting, this is why we do what we do. It, don't take it out. I really don't wanna take that out.
But then is that, is that an expansion of the mission or is it an expansion of the goal? But but I'm saying where it, where it belongs rather than in committee. Is it, does it belong in the mission or does it belong in the goal?
It belongs in all of that.
So with regard to the agenda, what Commissioner Remar is saying, keep it.
Yeah, it's the most tangible thing.
If we're keeping the reading, the mission statement.
Well, no, we don't have to read it every meeting, but.
Desert Gateway Highlands thing. Glenn or I should go to their meetings every month and come back with something reported.
That's fine, but so you're not really a standing committee, so take it out of the procedure document is all I'm saying. Don't call it a standing committee unless it's gonna meet on a regular basis with assigned commissioners.
I'm, I don't care what you call it, but it has to stay alive and on the paper the way everyone's talking about. I don't care what it's called. It can be a.
I don't even know what that means, what you just said. What does that mean?
It means I don't wanna lose.
Where do you wanna see?
Focus. On the things that we have determined historically are really important for this commission. Being veterans, being gay and the police, being. Gateway Highlands and they're, we're just lucky, um, you know, the Equity and Social Justice Commission. Started during the George Floyd and all the racial unrest that occurred a couple of years ago. And the whole idea of that was to make sure that we looked under the carpet here in Palm Springs. And we weren't gonna have an incident of a policeman shooting a young black kid running down the street. I don't think there's any human right that could be more important than.
Disagreeing with you, but it doesn't.
Well, you know, I just got addressing, addressing your issue about the standing committee. Look at the responsibilities. Maybe calling them ad hoc committees.
Call whatever you want.
And then just take out a lot of this responsibility and verbiage that has no application to what's actually happening.
That's fine.
And keeping those actual, you know, ad hoc committees.
In favor of the ad hoc committees, yeah.
That's fine. I don't care.
But I think, David, you're really pushing it like in terms of like how, what what a standing committee is, and I think that's what's really important to really look at. Are we using the semantics of standing committee or is this something else?
It partially is semantics, but it also. I have to understand, what is that ad hoc committee? Then when you have something to report, you simply report on it.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, and it also means that you don't have to meet for it. It just means that you need.
But we don't, we don't meet.
Right.
Turning them into ad hoc committees and that's fine. Takes away the responsibility. Meets on a regular basis and produces reports. I mean, every, it's always there. Adhocks can come and go. All right, well, then the, then we're in agreement. We just need to change it in our rules and our procedure document to. Take away standing and make them ad hoc.
So, you know.
There's no chairperson, there's no commissioners assigned to it.
No, well.
Unless you step up and say, I wanna be the.
That's what we've done in the past, volunteered to be the liaisons for those groups.
On on page eleven. Um, it talks about the the list of community liaison groups. Does that serve?
The purpose, yeah.
The purpose?
One, you know, that's a reality. I mean, you know, if you're serving, if you're doing. Desert Gateway or Veterans, if there are all these meetings that you that you you tend, so like, again, you refer to, so like, there's a whole structure of that, yeah.
Yeah, the whole thing about, I think this requires some needle. Sorry, Jake. Because I think the the difference between ad hoc or standing committee, once you, once you two guys are assigned to the mediation committee. And as our committee music, it is. Uh, a problem is is identified and then people are assigned to it and then it, and there we go. Um, and that's how it works. It has something to do with the Brown Act and how it always, like, I can't remember. I mean, I should know this, you know, twelve years on the office on Asian board, I couldn't remember because we went through this training a hundred times. I think it started. But I, I think we need an opinion on how. If we're going to have two people assigned to something on a regular basis, I don't believe you can, anyone can call that an ad hoc.
This, this.
Report and how you can meet. I think there's more to it than just, okay, let's do it.
Yeah, and and the reality is, and we've got different folks in here with the commission, this document that we're looking at is, there's an inch, there's a whole bunch of. I- intermediary like transformations of it or ev- evolutions of it that we're not even talking about. So that's, that's what, I think that's the sort of missing link here because we're not, you know, this is not what we actually do. So like. Uh, evolution, you know, the evolution of what's happened since this, you know, it's not, I think that's, that's what's unfair in terms of our, the conversation, like, we don't have. You know, we do have it because we had, we just look at last month's meeting and like, see what, how it's changed, but, you know, the roles have totally been different or. And also they've been assigned differently or they've been, you know, we've been onboarded very differently, you know, like of how we, you know, do do what we, you know, we can like. Literally, I did master calendar, if you remember, for a while, but it was totally like, it became a very, very like straightforward, like, oh, we're gonna do dot, 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 you know. These parades, it was so rudimentary and like, it's so basic and like, just, yeah. Yeah, but we do need a master calendar and the reality is that we, we need to be able to like say, hey, you know, we have these priorities coming up and that's. Hopefully, that's what it is that we do as a commission, like, we actually help identify like, these are the priorities of this fiscal, like this Calgary year, academic year. So that we can be involved.
That we don't, we, we must keep. Must keep what? The the master calendar.
What is the master calendar?
It's a calendar of of coming events and celebrations and. What is the commission doing? Are we parading? Are we attending an event? It's. Um, are we celebrating something? Is a proclamation being read?
Aren't you in charge of that now?
Well, I don't want to be. Because I don't really understand what it's, what value add does it add to the work of the Human Rights.
Tells us what we have agreed to recognize or commit to during different months of the year.
The process structure of like the.
So that sounds, that's not a committee. That sounds like it's a function assigned to a specific.
Person.
Person.
Okay.
I think we're.
Define it and put it in here and say that's.
Tucked up a little bit on semantics.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to understand what this, I want this document to reflect what we actually want to do.
And this is all you came up?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to start from some. It's incumbent on us.
It is.
To come up with. Current, a current document that reflects what we do and how we do it, so that if the nine of us tomorrow disappear. Somebody could pick up the document and reconstitute the.
Maybe what would be helpful, then, you know, if you maybe, uh, read one, if you had a, use the original document and put on your suggested edits. And put it to. And then go through the standing committees and what would you, how would you revise?
Well, I think, I think I'm hearing, we we make them.
More.
I think it's. List of community groups. Is a better way of approach. To not lose things like Veterans Affairs and LGBT. But that sounds like a liaison. Each commission is gonna have to sign up to be a liaison, not. But now we have nine commissioners and it become up to nine community liaison groups.
Except two is free on one. We don't have.
You want to.
Like Glenn and I both to get Desert the Highlands.
All right, well, if you want to. You can do two.
Edwin, you need to share something. You and I share that.
Yeah.
The social justice.
Yeah, it's totally like.
I'll take another shot at it.
Please do, okay?
I'll do homelessness and help here.
Yeah, I'm not objecting to this. I just wanna make sure that somewhere in the agendas, the. Focus groups that we've identified. Over the most recent years are somehow kept alive on paper.
Well, I think that's through the liaison to those. To identify a person to be that liaison if they can report of. When they have something to say about it. To genify a person to be that liaison if they can report out when they have something to say about it.
Yeah, yeah, especially for that level of.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right.
Yeah.
The organization needs one. Trying to get it right.
Gonna get there, some.
I think this was a very good discussion.
I am gonna tell, I am gonna take out those, anything that does talks about budget or annual report.
No, cause we're gonna get a budget. We're gonna make a budget request.
Then we'll put it back in. Right now, we have.
Good luck with that.
I don't think our, we should. Have a, you know, we're supposed to produce a budget. That doesn't make any sense. We can't.
But I mean, if we go to so many events and we have cable events, why don't we, why don't we fundraise? Why don't we do like a little raffle or something? I don't know. I'm just saying, like, there's like.
We have, we have a stipend. Is this a good time to talk about it?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
We have a stipend.
So last year. Exactly. Last year, we had, we had the bullying. We learned that there was a stipend with this commission on in the amount of a thousand dollars. And so, of course, that was already spent when the city covered the cost of the event and there was no more money available for anything. With this new budget has been approved, my understanding is that now we have an incredible stipend of fifteen hundred dollars.
Wow, that's an increase.
It's an increase. What can the money be used for? Well, as you know, we have a couple of very important events, community events that happen toward the end of the years. Um, some uh important dinner events where awards are presented. Um, we have a very, very important Harvey Milk Diversity Breakfast. Um, many of you attended this year. So maybe some of that money can go into helping us sponsor like a table so that we can all attend a full commission. But it's not gonna take us far. Certainly, it doesn't take us far. Um, but it is what it is and that's what the city has allotted um for our commission. So just keep that in mind and we'll try to make the best use of those fifteen hundred dollars as we can. Don't forget, we also have the um, the Human Rights Commission Awards Ceremony coming in February. And the nominations come in, starting to come in sometime in December, so we're gonna need some funding for that as well. And that's a very important event for us. Um, and then we have obviously, you know, parades and other events that we are invited to participate in and engage. Um, I think it's important for us to revisit what upcoming parades. Exactly, and what what can we do if we do decide to attend a parade in March? Uh, we're gonna be able to pass information about the human basic rights. Are we gonna be able to pass out forms for people to file a claim if they wanna file a claim? I mean, whatever that may be. But, uh, you know, participating and marching is important. Last year, we signed up for Pride and I'm very sad to report that I was the only person to show up to march and I couldn't carry a banner around myself. So, you know, those are the kinds of important issues that we have to make as a commission when we learn about a particular event. Veterans Parade is always important for us. Black History Month, um, it's important for us. Um, we we've done many other events and if if Pride is not gonna be one of them, that's fine. But, you know. Yeah, well, he was taking over as the position as the city council. At any rate, that's one, one discussion that I like to have with the commission, right? Upcoming events for the fall. Um, identify what we know and see if we collectively can make decisions in advance. As to how we should participate in these important community events.
I, um, I think I had sent an email to Jay and to you all about the ADAP, the Desert Healthcare, the Desert AIDS Project. Hope that what he walked, it was the AIDS, but now it's health equity. Yeah, yeah.
What about it?
Yeah.
So you just want it on the calendar to let the commissioners know it exists, it's happening?
And encourage us to attend and take our little banner and participate and even raise some money. I think, you know, that's the other thing we have to to honestly do, folks. It has been very easy over the past two years to kind of sit at home and look into the Zoom meeting and not do anything. I think we have to challenge ourselves. Why do we get on the commission? Do we wanna be active? Are we gonna participate in boot of bullying? Does it have to be like quarantine to get us to go? I'm embarrassed that Kigo says nobody showed up for the pride.
In fact, Lily and I were the only ones to sign up, right? I mean, you were there, but you couldn't make it.
Uh, I was supposed to go to Pride last year and the morning of I had to put my dog down, so. I was so sad for both reasons. Um, yeah, otherwise I would have been there, but I definitely had a family emergency that I would not.
It does have an impact, right? Other organizations are taking a look.
There's somebody else.
Other organizations that were present and marching just looked at me with my little commissioner badge and I was the only person literally walking behind. Um, city council member Woods' last parade. And I was smelling the fumes of the car. But, you know, but I showed up.
To the vice chair's point, I mean, I think until you make it a responsibility of being a commissioner to participate. At some level.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen.
I know you couldn't participate in one or other event because of health issues, right? You had.
Right. But I'm saying. If we wanna participate and have more than two people showing up to an event, then we need to. Put a stake in the ground and say, every commissioner has to agree during their term to participate in.
Three events.
Three events. Something. Leave it out there to the hope that people out of the kindness of their heart are gonna step up and do it.
I uh I agree.
I think.
Or, yeah, or at least for an event, we meet four before we go forward with it. Like, uh, like two thirds of the commission goes, otherwise we don't do the event because what's the point in three people showing up? Even with like the Veterans Day parade, out of all of us who went, there was how many people from the actual commission that walked with us? Was the the sort of thing that happened every time is there's only a handful or a few of us that go.
Yeah, it's always wonderful that you can bring your family members, right, and your friends to join us.
I mean, if I, as the events person, I'll go and try to identify all the possible events for the next twelve months. That I think can think of and put them in a calendar format. And at the next meeting. Do you think, do you put your name next? Can you bring your calendars and put your name next to one or two events that?
David, it's already done by, it's either charity news or something like that. They do it.
I'd like to identify commissioners with the event.
The the vegetarian thing is very important, though, because there's a level of in kind. You know, like a lot of times we'll we'll be part of something, but it's covered by the city. Like, if we, does it city, you know?
Like, for example, when we go to the vigils or the day of remembrance of the transgender.
That, see, those are the kind of things that we we put on our calendar as well.
So it's not just parades. So, you know, there are other community events as well, so.
Well, if you know any that aren't on the calendar, help, let me know, but.
Did somebody mention Village Fest having a um, a kiosk table?
Isn't that like, it's a seventy dollar deposit or something that we have to have a table there?
I think that's a great idea. I know Stonewall Democrats, that's where they get all their.
So who's gonna math, who's gonna be?
Once a month, I mean.
Every commissioner take one month?
Yeah, yeah.
It's every Thursday.
Talking about this.
Every Thursday. Village Fest is every Thursday.
Yeah, well, it's, it becomes like a, it becomes like less of a responsibility if we're there once a month or so.
All right.
Yeah. Like, as a commission, one of us, like, we have.
Put it on the calendar and commissioners sign up.
I mean, I wouldn't mind doing Village Fest most nights. It's just like me and a commission.
It was fun. You do your thing, you walk.
Yeah.
You buy some tchotchkes.
Especially with the fall coming up now, it it might, it'll be more profitable. For us in like.
How do we get a table?
More people.
Yeah, not like actual money. I meant like, it's more valuable to us.
It's assigned to us by the city. We have nothing.
Get seventy dollars out of the fifteen hundred.
Tells Jay, no more spending money.
I have, I have the signatory approval of anything that's gonna be spent out of the fifteen hundred dollars.
So you just tell.
Okay.
Remember, there's an ethics thing.
So I, I will take that for action and then next in September, I'd like to put on the agenda. A review of the twelve month event calendar.
Okay.
And every commissioner will look at putting their names next to events and taking one of the. Nine months.
Okay, another thing we put on that calendar is.
We'll put everything on that.
Yes.
Women's History Month.
Yes.
All the things that we would recognize and promote and. Okay.
Everybody.
We don't have a Hispanic heritage parade.
I love doing calendar. But I'm not leaving that room until I see nine names.
That's fine. That's fair.
Any final comments before we adjourn?
I got a lot of work.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
We should rank him.
Let we go until five.
Put some motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Plod seconds. We are now, we are now adjourning this meeting. The commission will adjourn to an adjourned regular meeting on Monday, September the eleventh. We'll try to do.